Or a potential development on Lindale. And I will pass it to Melissa.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm just going to quickly give you a little bit of an introduction here. And we do have some handouts. If anyone would like a hard copy, we'll pass those around. This is a redevelopment proposal for the corner, the northeast corner of 65th and Lindale. There are currently two small strip centers there. And there's a single-family home behind these that would also be included in the proposed development. As a little bit of background, this area is considered part of Richfield's downtown. It's been part of our, it's part of our Lakes at Lindale area. And the Lakes at Lindale master plan has been in place now for about 20 years. It's been refreshed since then. But what we look for in this area is mixed-use development, higher-intensity development, a lot of housing, things that are going to take advantage of the natural amenities that are in this downtown area as well. So I'm going to pass it off to Brian here with Enclave and his team. The clicker is not working for, I apologize. So one of us, I can play Vanna for you if that will work.
Cool.
Okay.
Can I buy a vowel?
Here you go.
Hi, I'm Brian Bachman. I'm with Enclave. With me is Austin Morris. He's one of the principals at Enclave. And David Stahl, who's our architect through Cunningham. So this project, obviously, we've been looking at this project for a while. We're very heavily involved in downtown redevelopment projects. It's kind of a passion project, especially for Austin. He can tell you about his love of downtowns. And so this one just felt like a real natural infill for us with the retail on the main floor and also having, being able to do some cool rooftop amenities that kind of overlooked that little hub of a corner there. So you can go ahead and keep us going here. Keep going. So what we're looking at on this project, right now, we have 130 units planned from studio to two bedrooms. The plan would be to do a high-end interior where, like we typically do, which has, you know, quartz countertops, stainless steel appliances. We do central heating and cooling, in-unit washers and dryers, all of those types of amenities. This one has a really cool rooftop amenity. We always try to do club rooms, do-it-yourself rooms, our large fitness and yoga studios. We always have a pet spa and tend to try to do some really cool things with bike storage and bike repair because one of the things we look at for this project is its walkability and bikeability to a lot of different amenities. We have 158 parking stalls underground, 38 stalls of surface parking. Right now, we've got it drawn up with about 8,000 square feet of retail mixed-use space that we have basically using Lindale as its activation point. You'll see that we, the plan has an area for some outdoor seating for a restaurant pub-type And then if, depending on how that retail lays out, David kind of planned to have a breezeway that would go through the building from the front to the rear so that we can make sure that we can have the people that would park in the back be able to activate the front. Go ahead and flip through. So this is one of the views from the front. Actually, why don't I let David kind of walk you through the, kind of the plan and kind of what we're shooting for, for a look and a feel for the, for the property?
Yeah. Thank you for having us here. So when we're looking at the...
David, can you turn the mic?
Oh, yes, certainly. There you go. There you go. So when we were looking at the layout, we wanted to make sure to activate Lindale as much as possible, not just with retail front, which is nice, but we have our lobby on there as well as around the roundabout. Sometimes it's nice to have a little recess, a little area patio, and therefore seeing the people outside activating the area outside of the retail would be very nice. Also, our amenity deck, it's kind of nice to get above the action and see the action above. It's on top here where you see those darker trees. So they have a patio that looks down upon the roundabout with a club room there on. Right now, we're seeing a initial exterior look. We look forward to your input and future thoughts on how it might evolve. But our idea is we have our three main ends with our focal point overlooking the roundabout. It's got some great visibility both up and down Lindale, and that'll become a kind of an iconic spot. And then some nice, kind of woven look connecting those three moves. And like I said, I look forward to developing those further. Maximizing all of the retail lobby along Lindale proper, roughly at that midpoint is where the split would be. But as Brian mentioned, if, for instance, we have two retail tenants, it's really set up nicely for a muse or a breezeway between to make sure that parking is convenient for all of the retail and they have an active face on the front. The larger units have balconies. The smaller ones probably would go without. Our larger units are usually on the corners because, taking advantage of windows on multiple sides. And do we have any plans?
[inaudible]
Oh, and we always like to do something new that most areas don't. We've been doing hammock lounges on our retail, our residential decks and other areas. This one, we thought of maybe something interesting at that corner move that would differentiate it from others. So it's kind of a rope hangout area. Obviously, very early in the design process, but something that we've seen in other states that could be kind of fun. So from a layout, we have the retail parking on grade right behind. Most of the comings and goings would be off of Lindale, but there is a secondary access on 64th. I'm sure we'll do everything we can to keep Lindale as active as possible, mostly for the neighbors nearby wanting to make sure that they enjoy current state. Right now, the existing parking lot, I believe, connects there as well, so we're kind of maintaining a similar scenario. We have secure resident parking on grade at this level and a ramp down to get the remainder below the whole footprint, our commercial retail and service off the backside. That line between the amenity and lobby with the retail is flexible. If a retail tenant came in and needed a little more, a little less, that's a nice, easy line that can shift. Conceptual upper level, typical level, we have our club room that activates the amenity deck. We'll have a number of things outside. We probably won't have a pool, but there would be chairs, picnic tables, fire pit, that sort of thing. And notice our larger units generally occupy the corner, corners, and we have a large array and mix of ones, twos, and studios. The AL is alcove, which, if you're not familiar with that term, is, it's a little bit larger than a studio, but the bed's in an area that your guests don't have to sit on it when they come over. And our last shot, just it seems to finish out the area quite nicely, maintaining some of the street presence, extending your downtown a little bit closer to the highway and on with the others.
You can, Austin, you can give us a little background on Enclave?
Yes, I can. Getting my bearings. I'm Austin Morris, Enclave Development. And we're a development, construction, design, build firm, and we're working with specifically kind of hand-selected architecture firms to design human-centric spaces. So our priority in anything, whether it's office or on this project, is to design for the site so that it makes sense for a community while taking very careful aesthetic approach and, I guess, diagrammatic approach to how tall is the building, is it a butts its neighbors? How does it fit within the neighborhood? How does it, how is it situated on that hard corner? And then in this application, being that it's downtown, just using that as an example, how does it take advantage and provide a surprising corner, something that people, when they walk or drive by, that for the next many decades is an exciting place for people to meander? We think that this has a lot of presence that way. We've developed over 2,500 units of apartments in the last seven years, a lot of office, retail, industrial. But our primary focus has been multifamily. So that's what we consider probably our specialty, if you were to have one. But what I love about this project is how it made sense and how it was put together as in talking with the city, planning staff, and community development is learning about the past, I guess, history with the neighborhood behind, single-family neighborhood behind, and then also learning about the history of the recent development by, what's that, next door to that organic food co-op?
Big League.
Yeah. That was great history, and we like to take that in mind before exploring it with an architect because in the end, we want a project where the, by and large, most people are celebrating it rather than going at it when we go to city council meetings, et cetera, where we're trying to put something someplace that maybe people don't think belongs. And I think in this case, it, we got great guidance from the city, and then also Cunningham Group did a fantastic job on the design because in the end, human-centric places want whimsy and want some experiences, and people can't really put their finger on why certain places make them feel happy. And that's where I think this space and how we designed that courtyard overlooking that hard corner while providing rooftop amenity overlooking Lindale, by doing some of those things, you put some of the activity on the streets that you want active. But you're also putting the activity where single-family neighbors sometimes tend to think that if it were on the opposite side, that it's going to provide some potential for noise or activity late at night. So that was a purpose with how we squeezed this on the site and also took guidance on the height of the structure. So, but we're very excited about this project. It's probably my favorite design, so evidently David chose Richfield to just give her hell. And, but we have projects...
Saving all the good stuff.
Yeah, saving all the good stuff. So we have projects, we have one downtown Shakopee, which is turning out fantastic. That'll start in a few weeks. And then we have one in Maple Grove.
One more, you can see some of the pictures.
Savage.
That's our, this is our one in Shakopee. Sorry.
Yep.
This is our one in Savage. This is our one in St. Louis Park. This is the rooftop in...
Maple Grove. The Sway Lounge.
The Sway Lounge. David had some fun on our, on our roof amenity in Shakopee. That is a year-round curling court. So these are the kind of things that we try to really kind of do is, like I said, to try to find not just some different amenities, but some different experiences. We also have a management company that runs all of our properties that is also a little bit different than a lot of the management companies in the marketplace. We were really more of kind of an experience-based management company where it's not just, we collect your rent and we fix your stove if it's not working. It's really more about trying to build communities and build...
And program situations to get people to interact with each other.
Yep.
But would love your feedback and any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from commissioners or council? Commissioner Elliott?
You forgot my name already. I, I, I think it's great timing. I think your timing is impeccable. Seven, eight years ago, when we built Lindale Plaza, it was the first three or four-story building in that area, and the neighbors were up in arms, and there was a lot of, a lot of consideration given to the impact on them. And I don't live there, but we haven't had much feedback in being disappointed with what we have. You know, there was concern, a lot of them had backyard gardens, they were concerned about sunlight and everything like that. And I think that, that they paved the way for what your project is going to do here, and I think it's great timing. And the one thing I liked about it, this is way down the road, but I know you indicated in the handout that, that the cost, price, valuation, everything's not probably going to allow affordable housing, but you're going to opt to the 15%. And from my perspective, I think that Richfield is in position to start looking at that more because it gives some liquidity to HRA and to the city itself to take that, rather than put affordable housing in every new complex, take that and use it to work on the NOAA housing and partnering with our aging apartment buildings and being able to help fund or co-fund improvements there. So we're maintaining the affordable housing, but upgrading some that we've had for a long time that just hadn't had the opportunity. So I like the idea of having some of that, the 15% coming back into the HRA and to the city itself so that they can partner with people that, it's really difficult to build affordable housing at a 30 or 40% level to make it break even. But if we're a partner and can, can find some money coming out of these new developments, I think it's going to make it much more productive for the city and much more attractive for the people we're trying to get placed in affordable housing here in the city. So I think it's a great idea.
Commissioner Reese Daniels.
You had spoke that you're looking at adding 8,000 square feet of retail commercial. Do we know what the square footage is currently on the space?
Considerably more than eight.
Yep.
Commissioner Reese Daniels, there's about 30,000 square feet there now, 15,000 per building.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Whalen.
I'm guessing it's early to have anywhere near exact numbers, but do you have an estimate of the TIF value that this would be and what the 15% in lieu payment would amount to?
Yeah, actually, LRS has already run that already. If you give me just a second, I can pull it out. I don't have my LRS sheet with me. Do you have that? Or I can pull it up on my computer. I've got it there. I think it's around $4 million. Yeah, what the TIF amount would be, the TIF amount was just under $4 million. It was 3.8 and change. And then the 10% of that TIF then went to the city for administration, then there was 15% that would go back to the other. It left us with a total of like three, just over $3 million.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm having a hard time separating my, my thoughts about the project from the fact that we, we just had a housing session with all three groups and, or maybe it was just HRA and council, but we, we just had a housing session where it seemed like there was agreement that we really don't need to be subsidizing market rate luxury things. And so I, I think it's a hard no from me on TIF funding. I don't disagree with the development itself. I like it, but I, I have a hard time putting city money toward granite countertops and luxury living. There's some other, some other minor things. Like I, I think my, I don't know if this is where you were going, but I think the, the drastic reduction in commercial space is, is somewhat concerning to me, but that obviously is somewhat flexible. But yeah, I, I have a really hard time envisioning any desire to put city funding towards something like this.
Yeah, and I can share a little bit about that. So the challenge with redevelopment projects, whether it's in Richfield or anywhere else, ends up being, especially on a block like this, is you're up against two challenges. One is existing conditions. So we have an existing retail building here that if you were to go to market with it and sell it as an existing retail building that's tired, and it was built in, I want to say the 60s, based on the in-place rents at that retail building and based on their actual income, it would sell for over $4 million. So that's one challenge of any redevelopment project is that we're not going to find land in downtown Richfield that doesn't have structures on them that are worth a lot of money. So you have a density challenge where we need to fit as many units, as many income opportunities on a site this tight to even have a project or a potential project. And I haven't seen any projects within the 46 metros on a dense site where you're purchasing existing property that were supported without TIF, short of being maybe in the middle of downtown Minneapolis. So that's...
Where their rents are considerably higher than, you know, suburbs.
So that's, that's always, always ends up being the challenge of dense, hard corners that are generating income and that sell for...
And that have some...
$20, $25,000 a unit in essence.
And you, well, at the same point in time, you also have the height restrictions that you're going to have there. Like you said, it's, you're not going to go build a 12-story tower there because the cost is never going, Richfield rents are never going to pay downtown Minneapolis pricing. So you really end up with the struggle of how to make it work financially without, and it, to be honest, it...
Well, it's not possible.
Yeah.
But, but, and how we look at it is if we're developing in Shakopee or Richfield or anywhere else is how can we do something that has enough dense impact where the taxable value of the project, rather than being a semi, I don't know if you want to call it blighted, but I would, but somewhat blighted property that has a fantastic restaurant in it right now? So that's what stands out to me is the beacon there. They have great restaurant and then some month-to-month retail and some tenants that might be more hit or miss, but still good businesses. And how do you redevelop downtown Richfield in a manner where we're providing something that's maybe worth $25 million so that the taxable value, even from a present value standpoint, it's better to redevelop today with TIF than it is to wait and see if it naturally develops in the second or third cycle from now in 20 years? So...
Melissa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did want to clarify quickly that TIF cannot be used to provide granite countertops. TIF-eligible expenses are things like acquisition, construction of structured parking, cleanup of environmental issues, those kinds of things. It's not, it cannot be used for amenities in the project. Eligible expenses are submitted before developers are reimbursed, before the note is issued. Just want to make that clear.
And TIF also can't be used to overpay for land?
That's correct. It's, it is the market value. That's correct.
Commissioner Erin Reese Daniels.
Yeah, I was to clarify, I was concerned about the massive loss in retail space. I think as we build more people and add more people to downtown, they need places to go to, right? Like, it kind of loses its downtown feel and we lose all that retail and excellent restaurant. There are some great businesses there as well. You know, they're, it's just getting really unaffordable for small businesses to find places to go, right? So even if you built it with the same amount of square footage, they couldn't afford probably to be there. And so that's my biggest concern about this area.
Other questions? Commissioner Rudolph.
In looking at this, did you look at, at all possibly about, yeah, I really like the look of this, expanding this to the corner of the east, to those two properties to the east, three properties to the east over towards Grant as far as that layout? Page six.
Yep. I, so the lower hanging fruit would be the two smaller residences.
Yeah.
The challenge on the corner is evaluating, and it is, ends up being a TIF evaluation, is that that one apartment building would, from a market standpoint, the guy wants over a million bucks for it. So from the amount of land that's there, it would be a hard argument. It would be a hard argument from an LRS, from an outside financial perspective, to get the proportionate TIF amount to offset the fact that it would make our costs more challenging. The other challenge that we have with the retail is it's this kind of battle between as we get more retail, we need more parking. And as we require more parking, we spend significantly more on deep foundations, double underground parking, and then you end up needing to go up again. And there is a, if you look around the Twin Cities Metro, there is a magic, there is kind of a magic height of five stories that most projects end up being just by nature of keeping it wood frame and keeping costs from entering the steel, structural steel caissons or pilings or deep foundations and adding $25,000 a unit. So we're trying to keep it a, I would call it a class, if you want to call it a class A minus, A project from a rental rate structure perspective for Richfield. But if we were plopping this exact same project in maybe downtown Minneapolis, it might be considered a B plus because we're trying to target rental rates that are actually achievable for most people in Richfield, or I should say, most renters in Richfield, and also target the unit mix to provide the size of units that's still palatable.
Councilmember Supple.
So I took a drive over in this area the other night just to check it out, and I know one of the issues has been the parking, and people end up going into the neighborhood and parking all over. So from that standpoint, I think that design is good, that there is going to be adequate parking for people because that is an issue because there's such an overflow from Lynn 65 that people end up all over the streets. My question had to do more with, in the materials we got for the work session, there was a shadow study. Do we have that so we can, I was just curious about if you could...
I don't have it on desk.
On this slide? Well, can you talk about that a little more? Because there, most of the year, it looked like it was pretty good, but then there were some points where it was a problem. Can you talk about that?
But do you want to walk through that one? Sure. I'll have to, hey, sorry. Thank you. I'll have to describe it best I can, oh, off of these. And I'm sorry, you can't all see them, but on the positive side, right now, most of the area to the north is parking lot and stays on site. There are shadows cast, and every time I make one of these shadow studies, they always say, "We need December 21st, the winter solstice." Well, there's a lot of shadow in this part of the country at that time of year, and luckily, it's cold, most people are inside, but the sun does set at 4:20, and the shadows are long even at noon. So there are shadows casting, but they, even at the worst day, there's minimal shadowing of the buildings to the north because they are across the parking lot and across the street. Do they get hit at some point? Absolutely. But for most of the year, summertime and the March, September, which is the equinox, there's minimal impact to those. So aside from December, it's situated quite well.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Whalen.
To your comment that you're aiming for rents that are affordable for most Richfield, what, what do you anticipate rents being?
The rents that we put together for our pro forma are very similar to what they're charging at Lindale Plaza.
Which is, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the prices of...
The studios were around 1,200. You had one bedrooms in the 14 to 15, depending on how big they were. Two bedrooms are in the 16s to 17s, depending on the sizes. You just have a lot of different unit types. You just have a lot of different unit types.
I, I just want to point out that the median renter income in Richfield is around thirty-five, forty thousand. So I think that's well above what half of Richfield renters can afford.
No, I, I totally agree, but it's also, I think if you look at what most new projects are throughout the metro, you're going to see that those rates are very competitive for new projects. We're never going to be able to compete with something that was built in nineteen eighty. It's just, that's just not going to happen. But at the same point in time, a lot, I think there's a lot of people in Richfield that want some of the amenities that go along with new buildings and some of the new projects that are going up all over the metro that they don't have access to with those. So they're certainly not going to fill, um, fill the, the niche for everybody. But I think that you have right now kind of a missing niche in, in Richfield because you guys haven't had a whole lot of new projects that have been built in the last, since two thousand on. Um, you've got a couple of new ones going up nearby, but it's, um, with the way that, uh, rentership is, is changing i- in the world now with, with the way that millennials look at things versus the way that, uh, some of our older generation looked at apartments that were built in the eighties and nineties and even in the early two thousands, um, where they were very not experience-based, they were not, uh, based more, they were really based more around, do you want a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom and it's eight hundred square feet or it's nine hundred square feet? And they were, they just don't have a lot of that same, uh, type of use.
Questions, other questions or comments? Um, Commissioner Quam.
Just, I'm just curious, this is not going to sound like the most serious question, but that design that just seems to keep coming up, that, that square design with the metal protruding suspended, um, and I know you didn't design it, but the, uh, design group, any reason, is that just the most economical build? And then is that why you stopped at five stories? Is because then you go to steel at six?
We also start to have more shadow problems at seven, at six.
Because you're doing such a big project and I'm not normally one.
And parking.
And we want parking.
The, the really, we, our, our original design that we had, um, when we first met with the city was, was six stories.
Uh-huh.
And what we were struggling with was parking it and being able to park it realistically to where the retail people weren't going to be fighting our tenants for the other, meaning then that our retail tenants are like, well, no one can park here, so we're moving out. So that's one of the reasons we went down. We had different shadow issues at six, uh, because it really started to get pretty tall compared to the neighbors. So that's why we went down to five. Uh, it just parks much better.
Any comment about that design that we keep seeing nowadays?
Which one?
Well, the design.
The spiral duct or which?
No, the real square within every so often, there's a jutting out kind of pillar and then those suspensiony bridges.
Oh, you're talking about like this?
Kind of, yep. And, and to the right, um, and this one that you're proposing.
I think of a lot of the jut outs, what you're seeing is it's a good way for us to tuck, um, decks so they can, they can stay out of the wind a little bit more. And it is just part of, it's just architectural interest. When you do the long, straight buildings, um, that's a, that's really going to look much more eighties, uh, because they just, they don't have a lot of architectural interest to them.
And I.
I'm always concerned about looking too modern. Is it going to last over time? But anyway, I know there's more con- serious considerations, like I'm, I'm, I have that, um, TIF question is above, you know, my pay grade. But I'm curious because I heard two really different things, but that's not for me to hash out, I guess, but I'm curious if other people on the HRA think it's a good deal to, you know, have it go into that pot like, um, Commissioner Elliott was saying versus not helping with a project that isn't going to include people at thirty or forty thousand as Councilmember Wayland was saying. And I think Lux, have we used them before? It seems that name is familiar. The management company Lux was for the.
No, this is, our first projects are just breaking ground right now for here. Might have been something that wasn't similarly named, but.
Okay.
No, we don't have any project, any properties right now that we're managing.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the other thing, I guess I'd like to point out with TIF, the other thing that TIF does is you look at what is our tax base for this property as it is versus what we're going to take it to by us investing twenty-eight million dollars in the site. So I think that's the other part of it that needs, as a long-term for the city, I think that's the reason why TIF is used so much for projects like this for redevelopment is for us because it ends up ultimately ends up helping the city in the long term.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
Like Commissioner Quam, I can acknowledge that mostly the planning commission isn't involved in TIF, but I did just want to say something to complement where Wayland's concerns. I think when we're not, we're not meeting the market niche for luxury housing, there are predictable outcomes and predictable outcomes are flipping naturally occurring affordable housing into luxury housing like we saw with Chamberlain after we didn't build any new housing for decades. So whether on balance this is worth subsidizing or not, I, I don't know, but if we can get new luxury housing, that's not, I guess it's taking out potentially one housing unit, but not replacing an existing apartment building, I think that's important because we're fulfilling that market demand and we're taking demand off of conversion of naturally occurring affordable. I am, I do share, uh, Commissioner Vries Daniels' concerns about the loss of affordable commercial space, but again, I'm going to say that's above my pay grade, so I don't really know how to answer that question. But that is, that is tough because there are a lot of interesting small businesses there. Uh, and then more in my wheelhouse, just a couple of sort of design considerations. I, I do really like how much attention you guys have paid to it being a downtown presence. Lindale Plaza to the north, although it's a nice land use, is a pretty sort of dead street presence. You rarely see people at all there. Obviously, it doesn't have retail, which is part of it. But even with retail and especially with those dual frontage with the parking lot in back, we've really struggled where that's the only customer entrance that the businesses end up carrying about and it's like pulling teeth to try to get them to do anything for the front. So I did want to clarify, when you talked about a pass-through, do you mean that then the principal entrance is in the front and the access is through the building to the front where they would enter?
Yes. Yes, that would be the idea specifically if it were, um, divided into two tenants. Right now, it's just one. It would be easy to have the patio side and a dual entry, but with two, uh, the, the use of a muse really goes up more and it could be a nice design feature. And if it was, uh, seen positively by the city, it could be incorporated in a single as well.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm, I'm encouraged to hear that. I would love to have a goal of the majority of people are coming in from the front, whether they park or bike or whatever, there, that's, that's fine. I think it's great to accommodate all modes, but I think there's a ton of value in the city of seeing people on the sidewalk, um, engaging with that. And I think in general, the neighborhood will appreciate that the bulk of the building is away from those existing single-family homes. I think that's good. I would maybe love to see one of those curb cuts going back since there is an additional curb cut from what's there now. And the one other consideration with all that parking in the back is making sure that landscaping or the fences such that headlights would be blocked from going into any of those windows. But overall, from just the land use side, I really like this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will say the city staff was really, really helpful on helping us, on, on pointing out, you know, the issues that they see with the neighborhood behind. That's why the parking was the big issue. They did mention the, the entrance and exits, they would want some buffering, they would want trees, they would want some different things like that, that they've, uh, they've been really helpful with us on the planning side of it.
Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for coming this evening. Just wanted to reflect a, a couple of comments, just, um, similar, similar concerns to what, um, Commissioner, uh, Vries Daniels and, um, uh, and, uh, Hayford O'Leary and, uh, Ms. Quam mentioned. And just a historical context for Richfield, if we, we set out to be a bedroom community once upon a time and we thought we, we're going to leave the retail and we're going to leave develop, we're going to leave that to another community. And now we've kind of tried to build back over generations to say, oh, we wish we had more space like that. And as we look down the road to say, what are we going to do in the next generation? I think if we, we lose twenty-two thousand square feet of retail space, there's a real, we, we fought really hard to get that space to begin with. And so as we look, we look fifty years down the road, if we're taking away that space, we're, we're really fun, you know, you, you mentioned, you know, being, you know, human-centered or, you know, like we're, we, I think that we run the risk of losing some communal connectivity when you, if, if you guys were unwilling to consider expanding that retail footprint in what you're, you're acknowledging is an extension of our downtown. So I would, I would offer that as a, as a consideration. With regards to, uh, what Councilmember Wayland said regarding TIF, I, I need a little more time to get my, my, my head around the numbers. I don't know that, you know, it's, it's an apples-to-apples comparison to say, we're not going to give money to this, uh, our money, because if we don't have a partner to develop, we don't have the money, period. So if there's no other project that's similar in this space, we won't get that six hundred thousand dollars that we could put or whatever that amount turns out towards another project. So I don't, um, I wouldn't want to pass on that opportunity, um, if there wasn't something, there wasn't something comparable. So I don't know what else would be possible in this space, but that's a, that's a concern that I would have, that, um, we would, we would miss, you know, the TIF, I think, has the potential to benefit, um, all the community, not just, not just one, one developer.
To, to answer your question real quick, I did look, I did look it up. The, the amount that would go into the fifteen percent is just under sixteen, six hundred and eighteen thousand. Um, and if I can make one real quick comment on the retail space, um, we wish we could have more retail space in there because it is, you have some really unique business fronts in that space. The long-term reality of what does that look like fifty years from now? That building's not going to be there in fifty years. And for us to even come in and just say, hey, we're not going to do any apartments, we're just going to do a new strip center, there's a zero chance you could put thirty thousand square feet there because of the, your new parking regulations would never allow you to have that little amount of parking for thirty thousand square feet. Because ultimately, parking is always going to become the problem. That's just not a very big site. So that's, that's kind of the hard part for that one is if we add, if we add another, let's say let's put two restaurants in there, we don't have enough parking because restaurants have a very high park rate. If you, if we put a dental office in there, they have a very low parking rate, but that's not what you guys want to see along Lindale is three chiropractors and a dentist. You're hoping to try to find some of the fun activity stuff that goes with, with the ones that were in there. The hard part for them is, is that the rents that are achievable in that building because of the current state of it and its age make those places possible, unfortunately. Because you're correct, if we would, if we built the exact same footprint back, A, we wouldn't be able to, but B, a good many of them wouldn't be able to afford the very basis of rent if we didn't make a dollar and donated the property.
Melissa.
Thank you, Mayor. There have been a lot of comments about the commercial and I did want to remind folks that we looked at commercial in this area as part of the comprehensive plan. There was a market study that was done. It's specifically centered on sixty-sixth and Nicollet, but it focused on an area in a five-mile radius, which is generally your drive time and your, your, um, retail shed. And what it said for this area is that we have too much retail, that retail has changed, um, that a lot of the bigger retail has now migrated to the interstate corridors and Cedar and Seventy-seventh. So some, some of those tenants that used to be in our downtown are no longer looking to put retail in our downtown. That market study talked about the possibility perhaps for some small offices. They talked about medical, dental, chiropractors, um, that kind of office space down there. But in general, they said the footprint of retail in Richfield's downtown is probably going to have to come down some or it's going to have to completely switch over to, um, cater to higher-end niche-type market. So that's just a reminder, that study is out there. So when you're thinking about this, think about it and keep that in mind, that context.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, I, um, have some comments and there, it's a lot of what others have said. I will say, um, I do like this project. I, I like what you guys are proposing. I have a lot of questions and I almost think that they're mostly for us as a city. But, so, uh, you answered the questions on the rent. I, and the two biggest questions I have are the more like philosophical as a city, um, with the, the TIF and the funding, I just want to wrap my head around, are there other projects that we've given TIF to that are market rate and, um, where would the TIF funding the fifteen percent go? Would that go directly? Would that go to the HRA specifically? And then how do we decide what, you know, what are some options for us to be using that, that money for around affordable housing?
Sure. So, um, are there other market rate projects where we've given TIF? Yes, the project across the street, the Lindell Gardens project, um, we retain, um, we don't retain the full fifteen percent, they provided half of the affordability. So we retain seven and a half percent of that TIF or we will, once it starts generating and paying out. And then that goes into our housing redevelopment fund. Historically, that money has been used to fund, um, our single-family housing programs, but, um, in the last couple of years, we've wanted to redirect that to almost exclusively fund affordable housing. Right now, that money is sitting in a pot and most of it has not been spent and we need to continue to explore how to use that, um, and, and what your priorities are for that.
Thank you. And then, um, also there was talk about the taxable income. So do we have, do we know what the taxable income, the difference between it now and, and in the future?
What the current taxes are on that property?
And then what the projected would be.
Right now, the tax capacity is forty thousand dollars and that's semi-annual, so it'd be eighty. And it would be two sixty-five semi-annually.
Okay. So those were, so that was kind of a bucket of questions, is just looking more at the details around that, which you answered a lot of them now. And then the other one, and it was helpful for you to talk about the study that was just done around, um, commercial. And I, I don't know if that is something that makes sense to include, um, in a memo or in another study session, but I think on, on the council, we have had discussions about how do we attract, um, new businesses? How do we make this a place, um, that people want to come to throughout the region? How do we diversify what we have here and looking to commercial and economic development and, and putting those pieces together? So as projects come before us, I think, you know, this is a specific project and I, I really like it, but then I think also what's for us as these individual projects come to us, what does it look like for our overall approach and plan around economic development in business, um, in diversifying and using that as an opportunity and how are we leveraging that? So again, um, I think the developer has shared their perspective on, on kind of commercial and, and business and that site and the complications and difficulties, but I might want to, I, I think I want to revisit it for us. I mean, we're a new council, um, we have so much development happening and I just, I would like to revisit that. And I know we've done some groundwork, but I feel like if, if we don't, if we're not intentional on our end as a council and thinking through that, um, there may be opportunities that, that we're not thinking of, that we could really capitalize on. And, you know, I, I, this is just a separate but personal thing. I love so many of the businesses in that strip mall, a lot of them, not just one, but multiple. My partner gets his haircut at the barbershop there. I go to Enchanted Rock Garden all the time. We have Lin sixty-five, which is a place that people from all over the region come to. So those are things that I think about that would be lost, um, that I want to think through as well. And again, I don't think that it's feasible, it's not going to be feasible for those places to be relocated into the new site because they need to continue their business and many of them won't be able to afford it. But are there ways, if this moves forward, um, to see if, if there are places in Richfield that they can relocate? For example, across the street, um, I know Colleen is looking for, for tenants. So those were the two, the two main things that I was really, wanted to get more information on our end is the financing piece and just connecting the dots on the details. And then, um, as a council, working with staff again to revisit the economic, our plans for economic development. But I like the development. Councilmember Supple.
I would support the idea of, of talking more about what, where we want to go and coming up with an actual plan because I do think, especially when, um, Commissioner Hayford O'Leary mentioned the unintended consequences, we do need to think through what the unintended consequences are because there's a ripple effect for every decision that we've made and I've heard a lot of good points, pro and con. I do like the design of the development and I think they're cognizant of the neighbors and trying to be respectful of the neighbors and that kind of stuff. But I, and, but I do think we need to think about what are those unintended consequences because I think you're right. If, if there's a push for that luxury housing and it could wipe out other housing elsewhere and this would be a place that we could put it in that's not going to be dislocating a whole lot of other people. So I don't know all the answers. So I don't know all the answers. I've gotten, gotten a lot of food for thought tonight, but I do think we need to keep talking about it and think about the unintended consequences, because we have some issues with H R A as some of those TIF districts expire. How are we gonna keep paying for some of the apartment remodeling and some of that stuff, too? So I don't know the answer, but I, I would support further study.
Commissioner Elliott.
I would just suggest that there's ripple effect for decisions made and not made. It works both ways, so you can't look at it from one perspective. Number two, in terms of commercial centers, we have a number of strip malls along corridors in the city that are ready, willing, and able to adopt the people that make it this place off Lyndale. I can think of three, three places on Penn Avenue between Sixty-seventh and Sixty-second. So there are opportunities in Richfield for them to relocate. And about TIF, thing to remember is we're not giving anything to anybody. It's a consideration to help them afford the cost of the construction that comes back and we get. We're continuing to maintain a tax basis, and it's gonna give us the opportunity to have additional funding to address the, the super affordable housing, the things that are most necessary in the community. We have thirty percent of affordable housing as it currently stands. That was the last. We probably are up a little bit with the new development. We haven't lost any. And I think, and, and Councilmember Wayland has brought this up a couple of times when he was running and also when he was active in, in the neighborhoods, that we don't have anything for the thirty percent and the forty percent, and people can't afford to develop it. So that's what, increasing the capital, the capital tax rate, what we're getting. We go along the Seventy-seventh Street quarter. We have three destination locations over there, albeit they're, they're, they're car automobile dealers, but they're high-end. You wanna look for, for places to, to do additional development, you go out there because people are gonna build to, to make use of the people coming there with affordable income. The same with, with Cedar Commons. You look at the, at the destination locations we have in Richfield, and that's where you start looking to put the commercial growth along those corridors. So what's, what's going here is taking, I mean, God, I'm gonna date myself. There used to be a bowling alley, underground bowling alley. I shot pool at Luke Hugh. Had Henry's right across the street. So I've, I've been through the, every iteration there, including, that's where Corner Plaza started. And all Catholic schools sold their uniform there, so I've seen it mutate and change. And so we'd like to be able to look, what's it gonna look like forty or sixty years? We don't have a clue. But what we do know now is putting up a, a project like this, and I wouldn't call them extravagant apartments. They're apartments that, that are what's going on in major metropolitan area right now. And I think that we want to maintain the, the accolades we've had for the last couple of years about people wanna move here. Our houses are on the market ten days. People wanna develop here because it's a growing, vibrant community, has access to everything in the city. So when we get an offer like this, you're right, we need to think it through. And, and we need to think about, about the unintended consequences, but we also gotta remember that the more we grow our tax base, the more able we are to help the people that really need to help in the city anyhow. So, so let's keep all that in mind when we, when we address some of these things.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. We have time still. If folks have more questions or comments. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question as to timing and the process here. What would, what, I'm just curious what the developer's looking for and what, what, what our timeline might be. And, you know, it's unfortunate we don't have Councilmember Garcia here to share her perspective, but just, just some clarity and expectations moving forward.
Sure. So based on your feedback tonight, the developer will, you know, go pow-wow and decide if they think they should move forward, what changes they might make. From there, it's likely that this site, while it is guided for mixed use, it will require some sort of zoning change, so there'll be a community meeting that needs to take place, perhaps multiple community meetings. And then they'll submit a formal application. I think it's the developer's intention, if they decide to move forward, that they'd like to construct next year. So that would mean this entitlement process would happen over the winter.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
I'm just curious on a more informal level, has there been engagement or will there be with existing tenants, and are any of them interested in being in a new building potentially, or would you be kind of starting from scratch?
Yeah, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay.
Wanted to ensure that we didn't put the cart before the horse.
Okay. I certainly hope that does happen going forward if you choose to move forward.
Commissioner Rudolph, no, yes, Commissioner Rudolph.
I, I, I do, you know, Pat said it very well. I, I think this is a great project for our community.
Commissioner Quam?
As long as this conversation came up, I have a question of kind of general to anyone is, how do we decide or how do we evaluate what kind of housing will last the longest? Like, will we survive a recession, for example? Again, that's out of my area, but H R A or somebody more experienced, I mean, and, and I know your company needs to know this is gonna make a profit for quite a while. Like, how many years do you normally wanna assure something will be profitable and survive ups and downs in the economy and changes and things like that?
So I would say, whether it's us or another real estate investment company, everyone's targeting relatively the same return. So after it's constructed, stabilized, leased up to ninety-five percent or better occupied, our investors are looking to make a six and a half percent, seven percent cash-on-cash return. So if they put in a hundred grand and they get six thousand a year in income from that, that is the general base parameter for any real estate investment, especially compared to the alternate options, because they could just buy an annuity or buy something competitive elsewhere, an exchange traded fund, invest it with Edward Jones or whoever. So what that means is that during a, a solid economic time like we're in today, they can expect that return if we had a downturn, hopefully not the same as two thousand seven, eight and beyond. Because during that time, I'm, I would guess that most, most people that invested in apartments or commercial property within the few years preceding that made zero or negative return for many, many years until the supply was absorbed, jobs were coming back. And right now, we're in a unique position in the Twin Cities market. You have almost forty thousand people moving to the metro. And everybody, everybody's talking about how many units are being constructed in the metro, and last year is around six thousand. And your ratio is still healthy. So you have roughly thirty-eight thousand to forty thousand people moving here, and you're developing across the metro around six thousand units, and hopefully, that's relatively balanced with most, most of it being developed initially in the first and second ring suburbs. But what we're finding where there's a lot of room is third-ring suburbs and second-ring suburbs that during this real estate cycle, because we're in the end of it, and we're, we're, we've been doing this for, I mean, I think at every, every time we go to a conference, so, we're in overtime, we're in the ninth inning, you know? That's been said for two, three years. The Twin Cities, from a health perspective across the nation, is unique in that you're adding roughly five point seven people for one housing unit in the rental space, whereas like a Denver is three people for every one unit. You go to Austin, that's two point five. So we still have some legs left in the Twin Cities because of how strong you guys have performed from an attractiveness standpoint. People can come to the Twin Cities and although the rent structures, I think, initially seem really expensive for what the Twin Cities was used to a decade ago, if you were to go to Denver and see this exact same product type, two-bedroom rather than sixteen eighty-five or seventeen eighty-five would be twenty-six hundred in a similar location. So that's a whole different discussion, but I, I get passionate about housing in that fashion because you look at the changing rent structure in the Twin Cities. Eight years ago, you could buy, the average home price was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, and today it's two hundred and seventy-six. So you're actually having a changing or a shifting, and it's the same in every metro, whether it's here, L.A., Denver, Austin. There is a shift from single-family homeownership to rentership, and part of that shift might be demographic and taste. I don't wanna maintain anything. I want community amenities. I want walkability. I want a bus stop nearby. I don't wanna drive my car everywhere because I hate traffic. Some of that's human behavior and some shifts in people. And the other shift is I can't afford the house that I want or that my parents had from a millennial perspective. But affordable housing everywhere is challenging. I, I would say to build, ground up affordable housing in any metro in the United States from scratch without low-income housing tax credit or without assistance from a variety of sources like, like H R A is impossible based on the cost of construction and the cost of land. So that's a challenge every metro's faced with. I would argue that with what you're provided within an apartment community today, you know, internet's paid, it's a central air system. Most of the time, there's a fitness center. Most of the time, there's community amenities. Most of the time, there's a coffee bar. There's these features that in the, you know, decades before weren't provided in the same fashion. So what people are paying as a proportion of their income has, has changed. It used to be that we'd say, if you're paying over thirty percent of your income on housing, you're challenged. Well, the average person in the United States, I think, is paying around forty-seven percent of their income on housing, which is challenged. I would argue that in rentership in the Twin Cities today, if you're in thirty-five, forty, you're in the norm. Whether that's right or wrong, I would say that has more to do with income growth, keeping up with costs.
The other thing I think that, that I'd point out that when it comes to its longevity, it's one of the reasons that all of our projects that you see are all gonna be very, very nice. Not one of them will be the nicest one in its market. Not one of them will be the highest rent in its market. Every one of them will be lower than probably the other ones, because we typically do not go into any market and say, hey, let's go set the market.
Yeah.
Because we really try to say, okay, what is, what is the competition doing in our marketplace? And then we're like, okay, let's be around those prices. Let's try to offer more, but at those prices, because you're not wrong to say, okay, what happens if, if a big recession comes again? Well, the people that are building those A-plus-plus resorts, that style housing, that rent is three thousand dollars a month, is great when everything's great, but they're the first ones that get hit pretty hard when everything goes down. So we tend to try to find more of the middle and do it really well and do it with a really neat look and try to, like I said, and, and build, build around experiences and the rest, and try to offer some of that. But we don't try to set any records for, we have the coolest amenities in town, because, you know, the Doran projects are amazing. I mean, I would love to build one of those. Sometimes I just don't know how to make the finances work on it.
Well, long-term, there's, if you're setting the rents at twenty-three hundred bucks a month or for a two-bedroom, during a challenged environment, you're gonna be challenged, and it's gonna be interesting.
Are there any last comments or questions from commissioners or council members? Great. Well, then I will end this study session. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. Thanks.